Check, check. Can you hear us now?
And while, well, I'm gonna keep going, just for the council at least. While John's figuring that out, I'll just let you know that this information was taken, again compiled from all the documentation that we have on this pro- on this project, specifically the auto mall, as well as all the meeting minutes. And we did have some staff also review all of the closed meeting recordings from, from the, uh, the history in which the auto mall was discussed. We also have some representatives from the auto mall here tonight that are happy to answer any questions if the council does determine that's necessary. So as you recall, well, some of you may not, this was prior to your time on the council. I think just Steve was not on the council, Councilmember Shields at 2015. The auto mall was first brought up at a city council retreat.
At when?
In 2015, January of 2015.
So, uh, 20...
None of us were.
None, none, no one was on the council at all.
No, it's like, none of us were on the council.
I definitely wasn't around at that time, so none of you were, none of you were on the council. So that was the first introduction of, of an auto mall. And you'll see from the next slide that it really wasn't brought up again until about a year and a half later in July of 2016. And that's when the extension of Main Street came into discussion and the commercial, potentially residential areas that that would serve. Here's a map of the general area when we refer to the auto mall. This table, which might be a little hard to see, describes all of the property owners of those individual parcels at that time of, of 2016. It also represents some of the difficulty and challenges that the city has had to undergo to take down a lot of these properties. You know, the, the smaller the parcels are, the more difficult, more difficulty you have in, in combining a, a conjoined piece of, of land that's developable. Some highlights of 2017, in August 9th, there was, again, a city council closed meeting. There are a few more notes in your packet. There may be on that issue of what was discussed at that closed meeting. October 17th of 2017, we went under contract to take down the Miller and Bowler parcels of property. And then on October 25th of, of that same year, we got authorization to create a reinvestment project area specifically for the auto mall. Here's just a rendering of what that anticipated project would look like. This runs north to south is actually left to right on this, just for orientation purposes. The, the bottom, or, yeah, on the right side, again, just for your reference, is a lot of the retail space that's been rezoned recently to, uh, for that purpose. And then the remaining parcel from the, parcels from the right to the left would be auto mall special district. Some items that occurred in 2018. So we've had a couple of amendments to the purchase agreement for the Miller Bowe contract, Bowler contract. There were, I believe, five amendments in total throughout that time. Many of those were discussed in closed meetings. And, uh, the, if I recall, and now this is slipping my mind, that purchase is complete.
Yes.
That, for that parcel, for those parcels, that is, that purchase is complete. A, a couple of other closed meetings occurred in 2018, January 10th, May 16th. And then a, an important piece to this whole picture is in July 11th, the city entered into an interlocal agreement with the, with the CRA, with the CDRA to, to set aside some tax increment for, for this project specifically. So as, as you recall, and I believe the majority of you were on the council at this time, that interlocal agreement set aside TIF at a 70/30 split and put a 15-year term on that. So the cap on that was, was to be $16 million. We've not entered into a participation agreement with anyone regarding that, so that is still currently just money for the CDRA at this time. In September 12th, the city had another closed meeting to talk a little bit more about some of the takedowns that still needed to occur in that area. At that time, I believe the Bowler property was still, or, I'm sorry, the Butterfield property was still pending. And that is depicted in that note on September 14th. There was a, a closing that was scheduled to happen on September 14th. And there was a, a discrepancy in the amount that was needed to close that. And the city paid $131,000 to make up the difference that was needed to close that property.
Chase, just real quick, going back to that last item.
Uh huh.
And maybe you're gonna get to it. That discrepancy occurred because of a, a legal description in, in accuracy within the closing documents.
Correct.
Is that correct?
So there was a legal description that was used to calculate the acreage that was to be taken down from the Butterfield property. Closing documents were drawn up based upon that amount. When a survey was done, it was revealed that there was a shortage of the actual acreage that was to be purchased. And so the Butterfields required that, those additional funds to be made up before they would close. And this, we were in fear of losing the deal at that time. And so we decided to use money that had already been budgeted for that purpose within the city's budget to make up that difference of $131,000 so that the deal could be completed.
Chase, can you explain the role of a promissory note for that amount of money? If it was additional funds that we were just sending to the closing agent to close on the land, why is there a promissory note? Why was there a right of offset on another deal? How, how were those two items connected?
So, for this particular transaction, developers' funds were used to purchase that property. And they were used for the dollar amount that was specified in the closing documents. When we received the survey back and we were required to pay that additional, it was $129,000, the $131 brought it up with closing costs. When we were required to pay that extra amount, the developers weren't able to come up with that money, the investors. And so, again, in fear of losing the deal, we paid that additional amount. The purpose of the promissory note, and, and to be frank, I'm speculating here. This, I was not involved in the process, and all of the tape that I reviewed didn't discuss that. It would really be a question we would have to ask your former legal counsel, right? Why that particular course of action was taken? There are a number of ways you could secure that money, and this is one of them. You know, it, is it the best one? I'm not sure. Maybe not the one I would have done. But it was one way to secure the payment of those funds back to the city.
So to, to clarify, the purchase of this Butterfield property was being paid for by funds from a developer?
Correct.
From the developer.
And we, we entered into an agreement with the developer to have that land transferred upon a, a certain date. So the property was still in our name. It was titled in our name, purchased with funds from the developer who we had entered into an agreement with to transfer upon certain conditions and dates.
But they were paying for it, but it was in our...
In our name.
In our name.
Yes. So that would, that would have been one other way we could have secured that money, right? Is, is put a cloud on that title to...
Sure. That, that seems appropriate way for that to traditionally be handled, so, okay.
And just to clarify, the money used to make up this difference that we're talking about right here was money already approved and budgeted within the budget for purchase of land?
It was. The, the 2018, 2019 fiscal year budget had appropriated funds for the purchase of real property specifically for the auto mall.
For the auto mall, okay.
For this type of land in this specific area.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And as a side note, there was an additional step taken by your former legal counsel to additionally secure that money by including an offset right in a reimbursement agreement that was also tied to the developer of that land. So that action has already taken place. If you recall, we talked about that in a closed meeting. It might be a month ago now, on that offset right. We have since called that due. We've offset some amounts owed under that reimbursement agreement. And the developer has, has agreed to pay us the outstanding balance, which is about $29,000, so. So that money is coming back into the...
Do we have a timeframe on that remainder?
Um, we've, we've invoiced him. It was, uh, invoice was sent out two weeks ago.
So, so he's received an invoice, and we would expect a, a normal process for that to follow? Okay, so we're expected to be made whole rather soon?
Correct.
And just another, just to make sure I'm tracking everything. So, again, talking about ways to, to guarantee that reimbursement of that money, we essentially almost had a double backstop there because, one, we had the property titled in our name. We owned the property.
Correct.
So at time, knowing that this was outstanding, we had at least one avenue to say, before we're gonna transfer title of the property, that difference will be made up. And secondarily, there was the offset agreement that was created in the, in the reimbursement agreement.
Correct.
Okay.
And when I saw that, admittedly, I said that, you know, it's a, it's a bit of crafty legal work. You know, I, may not have been the first thing that would have come to my mind, but it, i- in effect, it, it was efficient, right? One way to do it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, John. Thank you. And so, going back to this, uh, the discussion of this note, there was a closed meeting on the 26th. Some of that was discussed. The shortage was discussed. And direction was given to, to get the deal done. And shortly thereafter, so the day after, on the 27th, we don't have these notes in there, but on the 27th, the note was executed. On the 4th of October, the reimbursement agreement, which we discussed previously, was amended. And then on, um, October 7th, the closing happened for that property? October 4th. So October 4th, the Butterfield property closed. And, uh, and title was in our name at that time, so. Again, another meeting on October 10th, closed meeting. A few more closed meetings. Sorry, Jonathan, I'm making you go all over here. Next, next slide. Thank you. A few more closed meetings on this. And, and the majority of these closed meetings, when you review them, they are to discuss the, the purchase and the transfer and the takedown of, of certain property. So it does fall within the statute to, to have this many closed meetings, right? A lot of people look at this and might have alarm bells going off that so many closed meetings were convened to discuss this property. But, you know, looking at that information, I think it was appropriate in each one of these cases to do so. Another milestone on November 11th, additional property was taken down. This is from the Miller Bowles area of the auto mall. It was closed on November 11th and 12th. On December 12th, the council adopted a specific AMSD zone, auto mall special district zone. Fine, thanks, John. A, a few more closed meetings regarding the, some of the other parcels of this auto mall area. Next slide, John. Thank you. Again, some more closed meetings. This is about the time when the, um, the developer had spoken with some car dealerships. Some of their concerns were the UDOT property. As you'll recall from our recent discussions, there are two separate pieces that make up four parcels of UDOT property. There's the flagpole piece that runs kind of north to south through the auto mall property, just intersecting every parcel that we own that puts a damper on our ability and the developer's ability to market that to dealers. And we have since been able to resolve that issue for the pole piece. UDOT is going to transfer that to us, as you know, and we will provide them an easement in exchange for that transfer. And then there is the storm drain piece, which is on the eastern border of boundary with Mountain View Corridor that we are in works of trying to reevaluate the pri- the price that UDOT has, has assigned to that piece of property. So that, in about May of 2019, is when those discussions started to come up. And that was the majority of the discussion moving forward. There were a few more closed meetings to discuss that. Here's a map depicting those parcels. So, again, number one is the flag piece. 25 is the flagpole, which we've agreed, which UDOT has agreed to transfer to us, and we'll provide them an easement in exchange for that to access parcel one. And then parcels 27 and 28 are those storm drain pieces that we are working on taking down with UDOT. A, a little later on, there are some additional meetings with the developer to discuss the participation agreement, again, back in 2018, December of 2018. Council executed that interlocal agreement with the CDRA to provide that TIF. This is a, an extension of that discussion with the developer and the potential benefits to the developer and dealers as they come in with regard to those funds. The Bowles con- the Bowles property went under contract in 2019 as well. Some additional dealers were contacted and, uh, essentially, we were informed that they wouldn't be coming at this time, but they would, uh, there were some things, again, like the UDOT property that they were concerned about that kept them from really pulling the trigger on getting a, a deal done with that property. Next slide, John. One of the issues that came up during this time is some of the contamination of the soil. A lot of that is with those parcels along Harriman Boulevard, near the southwest corner there, and some of the retail space that, that's in that area just east of Main Street. The, uh, and I don't recall, in my research of this, what was, what was decided with that. I, I can maybe allow the developer to answer that if you do have some questions on this additional piece, the contamination. But this was the subject of some of, of the additional meetings that were convened to discuss the auto mall. Some of the additional Bowles property was taken down at the end of 2019. Some additional meetings, again, were held to, to discuss that UDOT issue. There were a lot of meetings and to discuss that UDOT issue, and only recently have we been able to kind of crack that nut and break that loose. And, uh, well, again, more property taken down with the Bowles. What you have here is a map depicting the radiuses that are determined by state statute of how close a proposed auto mall can be to another auto mall. And if I recall correctly, the, the statute states that a, an auto mall cannot be within 10 miles of a, a competing auto mall. So if you have a, a Ford dealership, you can have another one within six miles. But if you were to have a, a competing auto mall within that area, state statute prohibits that within a certain radius. It's depicted here. And then our more recent history on the auto mall. In, uh, some additional discussions on, on the UDOT property that was still causing issues, the CDRA, the use of that TIF money with the developer under a participation agreement. And then about that time, end of January, early February, the PID discussion really came into being. This was just right before I, I came onto the city. And I know Allen did a lot of work in putting together a policy for the city wherein a PID would be approved only for this area. As you will call our, our PID policy approves, doesn't approve a PID, it approves the application for a PID only within the auto mall district. Some additional notes about dealers that had declined the developer's deal to come there, again, citing issues with some of the, the land still being held by, and owned by UDOT. Some additional closed meetings in April, and then again in May to discuss additional dealers that might be coming to, to the property. And, and around this time is when some of the property was rezoned from auto mall special district to retail on that southern portion bordering Harriman Boulevard. End of May, I was here for this. The PID policy was adopted, again, only for that area could a PID be considered by the city council. In June, there was a contract amendment wherein the first payment to the city by the developer for property held in our name was extended for a year. That prop- that, a contract was amended, executed per the council's request. And then, as recently as June 10th, we've had another meeting to discuss a rezon of some of that area, again, along the southern border of the auto mall to bring in some additional commercial and retail. There were a number of meetings with UDOT throughout this time. One of them occurred in, in August. We did have a meeting in person at UDOT to discuss the possible trade of those parcels that I've discussed previously. And, um, yeah, go ahead, John. Thank you. And then in September, we held that closed meeting, which I discussed previously regarding the developer's proposal and the note amount. That, again, was, the direction we received there was not to proceed in that manner and to call due the note, which, as I explained previously, has been done. So that's a very general overview of some of the significant dates related to the auto malls. You'll see in your packets there, there are presentations. We're happy to provide all of the presentations that were given in an open meeting, all of the documents in meetings from the open meeting, and all of the video from open meeting at your request. And then any of the items related to a closed meeting, anyone present in those meetings is able to come and view those recordings, see those presentations, and have those documents needed that were presented at that closed meeting.
So question for clarification, because there's information we have here that is in addition to what was in your presentation. How much of that is protected at a closed meeting?
So the information that you have there is, does describe briefly what was discussed in closed meetings, but it doesn't divulge, to my legal opinion, doesn't divulge anything that would warrant a violation of that.
Including who made what decisions, or who gave what direction?
Yeah, it's very, very basic, yes.
Okay.
Just have a question. Um, the borrower on the $130,000 note, is that the same entity or person on the $200,000 note we discussed on May 13th?
Ooh, you gave him a good one.
Great question, Steve. Yeah, let me look here.
On what date, Steve?
The May, May 20...
When the timeline you gave us, the discussion was on May 13th.
May 13th.
Of 2020?
2020, when we discussed a $200,000 note and the extension of that.
John, I can't access the Dropbox link. That's the one I can't access yet.
What date? May 20?
May 13th.
May 13th.
But are you essentially asking if our partner is the same on that note as the partner on the other note?
Yeah, well, yeah. We use words like partner, developer, without being specific about who the person or entity is.
Sure.
And so I'm trying to be specific. Are those the same entity?
So, I'll, while I'm getting this link to all of the documents, I'll, I'll describe it this way. So the, the developer is Harriman 73 Partners, who we have here represented by the street gentleman behind me. They, we have entered into an agreement for the transfer of some of that property. The money that I described previously that was used to take down some of the Butterfield property, some of the other property, was supplied by Harriman 73 Partners. So when I referred to the developer, our partner, the investors, I was referring to Harriman 73 Partners.
What's hard for us, Chase, is that the first time we've heard that name is a couple months ago.
Yeah.
Well, it, it was listed, it was listed in all the agreements that council reviewed.
We didn't review any agreements.
But I, I have in the meeting minutes that those agreements were discussed in council and authorized by council.
So discussed or reviewed is different?
Two different things.
And I think there's value in going through that timeline and seeing when those... And I think there's value in going through that timeline and seeing when those agreements were executed and reviewing the tape, whether it be in a closed meeting or in an open meeting, about what was discussed and what direction was given. Just off the top of my head here, let me pull up this Dropbox link. Thank you, John. So for instance, we have a, the, the amendment to the real property purchase agreement, which was discussed in June of 2020. It was with Harriman 73 Partners. That previous purchase agreement was entered into.
I guess we don't see the agreements as the point being made. We discussed them, but have you looked thoroughly through their agreements? Do we ever get the agreements to look thoroughly through?
That agreement I did prepare and to my recollection, it was included in the packet.
That was June 2020 though.
June 2020.
That's what I'm saying.
I just say prior to that.
Now, and that's, again, that's a valid concern and, and I think a lot of that answers.
I'm just trying to speak to Steve's actual question, right? Going back to those references of a partner, et cetera.
Sure.
Who are we talking about?
Sure.
It goes back to some of the comments I made in our, at the beginning of our last meeting about some of the specificity that I was requesting in information that's provided to the council, that it articulates who the entity is that we're talking about, who their legal and lawful representative is and are they present? You know, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
In this matter, it's, it doesn't matter whether or not those are the same entity.
Does it does not?
It does matter.
So you know, just looking at our timeline here, I mean, back in July of 2019, Larry and Dave were both here present tonight, were in a closed meeting as well. I, I can't recall off the top of my head what the specific discussion was of that closed meeting. I may not have ever reviewed that closed meeting video, but they were there, they were present to, to discuss the auto mall. Again, I, I don't know to answer your question, right? If they said, we are Harriman 73 Partners. I don't know if there was some disconnect there or what the, what the.
The reason, the reason why this is important is it'll, it'll relate to this, you know, we talked about this Creek Ridge, Mountain Ridge timeline. There are issues about whether or not somebody was legally able to speak for somebody, even though it had been represented all along, who the quote unquote people we were working with is. That lack of specificity has created some complexities and some issues from that.
Is that a concern with the auto mall project?
It is in reference to these two notes.
So I can answer the question on, on the note for the $131,000. That was entered into with Riverside Development. Riverside Development is an entity of James Horstley. James Horstley is a member of Harriman 73 Partners.
For how long?
How long?
All time?
I'm sorry, how long has he been a partner of Harriman 73 Partners? Uh, that'd be a question for Mr.
Well, is that, is that, is that relevant? I guess is the question.
And.
And, and I guess my next point would be is, is, is them as the investors on it, do we, do we or should we, do we believe that we should have say in who they solicit or bring in as investing partners?
No, that's not, that's not the question. The question that I have is that when we were asked about an extension on a $200,000 loan.
No, I, I understand that, Steve. I was referring to the question.
If there was another, if there was, if that same entity was 11 months delinquent on a $130,000 loan and that information was omitted, then I have a concern about that.
And my, my remark was made towards the question of, of how long have they been a partner? And my, my remark was is, is it relevant?
It is relevant if Riverside Development is part of Harriman 73 Partners. Or not?
So let's, I, 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 I'm sorry, I do need you to just hold until we take comment, if we do take comment.
Who's the other note to?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still pulling that up. We've got hundreds of documents here. I'm trying to siphon through them. May 13th, you said, right? Right, Steve?
Yeah, that's, that's the date I got off of the timeline you presented.
Of the timeline.
Yeah.
Thank you. I mean, do you have your computer? Look that up. This is 2019, right?
No, 2020.
May 13th of 2020. Yeah, just a couple of months ago.
Steve was on the council when the request was made.
Yeah, you do. There is one, Tammy. It's.
It's right here on.
It was on this timeline, said May 13th, city council closed meeting, Scott Lett with Mayor, Larry, payment coming due at the end of the month, like to extend the contract and amend the contract for one year.
I've got the.
I have no idea when that note was originally signed, other than we just discussed it on May 13th. And not, not to beat this drum too, too much here, but as you can see, the difficulty you're having going through the documents to identify, imagine a council person who wasn't even here for some of those other agreements, trying to identify who these parties are.
Absolutely.
And who it is we're actually making decisions about and for.
Oh, absolutely.
That's, that's part of the reason why I'm calling for this additional specificity.
That's why we've linked, so all of these green buttons, if you came in to, to watch these, link directly to that section of the meeting minutes where you would see those discussions being, you know, taken. But this is a closed, so we can't bring it up up here.
So we may not be.
I assume the links are only to the bits that you guys have selected?
The video should pull up the whole thing or is it just the, the clip?
It's, this one is the clip.
Or some of the full summary clips that we have.
It just depends on how long that discussion was, so.
It's not, it's not linking it to it. So I'm just going to look for it. Okay. I'm going to have Tammy find that, Steve, while we.
We can, we can move on.
Continue our conversation.
We can come back in as a.
It, it is, it's a legitimate point and, you know, I'd like to give you the right answer.
Okay, thank you.
Are you looking for more questions from us?
Any questions for me or for Harriman 73 Partners or any additional discussion?
So let me ask the council, because clearly some of the individuals involved have expressed a desire to speak. It is a work meeting and we generally do, we generally would look at staff to give us the information. What is your thoughts on letting that particular individual speak?
I think if it provides the clarity that, for a question that's been asked, it's absolutely appropriate.
We can move on. I don't need the answer tonight. Doesn't need to happen.
Okay.
I mean, there's so much for us to go through. I mean, oh.
Okay.
This would be great for us to make.
This will be our start.
Decisions on these things going forward, but quite frankly, doesn't play into.
Okay, all right. So do we need any further discussion on this item before we move to the requested closed meeting? Real quick, no, I think I'm good. So is there any other information at this time that you, that staff would like to provide to the council regarding these items?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that report, that administrative report. It was appreciated. If there's no further discussion on that item, I will accept a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to temporarily recess the city council work meeting to convene in closed session for the purpose to discuss the character, professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual and the purchase, exchange or lease of real property as provided by UDOT code annotated 52 dash four dash two zero five.
So I have a.
Mayor, before we go to a vote, can we at least make a comment or discussion on the motion?
You, we're happy to have discussion on the motion. So I have a motion from Sheri as second. I will accept a comment.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I guess I have some confusion as to the reason that we're calling for a closed session tonight. And, and I want to, I want to express that before there's a vote taken so that that can be part of the record. So as, as noticed and as motioned, we have both, both professional competence or physical and mental health of an individual, and then we have the purchase, exchange or lease of real property. To my knowledge, and again, I'm, I'm looking for clarification here, but to my knowledge, we do not have an outstanding item related to the exchange, lease or lease of real property that would warrant us taking that item into a closed session. And I'm going to look to, to our city manager and our city attorney, again, for clarification, if there's something I'm missing then, but I'm not aware of an outstanding item that we need to go and talk about that pertains to exchange or lease or purchase of real property.
No, there's nothing open at all. Everything we've actually had in closed doors is already closed.
Okay.
So that, so when you say closed, you mean resolved?
Or that direction.
Okay. Okay. Secondarily, to the other item on there, which is to the character, professional competence, physical or mental health of an individual. Again, I personally am unaware of a current issue for, that meets this definition under a closed session that we need to take up as a council. You know, I've expressed my concern a couple of times over the past week about the closed session. In fact, I've sent two emails to the group expressing my concern. Both times I have expressed my respect that an individual or individual council members can call for the, the closed meeting to be noted or, excuse me, noticed. And I've asked and I've again expressed that I, I'm not aware of a reason to go into this closed session, but I've asked for those that have called for it to provide that clarification for me. Again, I respect the fact that, that they can call for it. I want to understand what we're going into that closed session to discuss. It was just last week that there was a comment made, I believe it was Steve, that brought up the comment last week, that he would like to know what the issues are going to be discussed prior to going into a closed session. And it seemed at that time that the majority of the council agreed with that. So again, to this item, I have asked for that information or that understanding, again, a couple of times. And I've only had one of the council members that supported going into the closed session that has reached out to me to at least express his views of why he believes it's necessary. I've not heard from any others. And that council member and I discussed it and I, I expressed my opinions at the time and appreciated the discussion and respected the discussion, but also expressed that I don't feel like it, it rose to the level of warranting a closed session to discuss that. In fact, when I sent the emails out asking for that clarification from the other council members, the last time I sent that out, the only response that was again, again, sent via email to the rest, again, other than giving or providing that clarification that I asked for, was the response of, I don't know what anyone is waiting for, three council members have requested it. And again, I respect the fact that those council members can request that, but I don't know what the purpose is for, and I don't think that it meets.
I actually have that full email with a response from me and I'll be happy to, to tell you why. If it's not clear, I asked, I'm the one who asked for the meeting twice in that particular
Can I finish my comments?
email.
And I'm happy to hear.
I thought you were finished.
I'm happy to, to, to hear. So I guess, again, going back to the comment last week of, you know, we'd like to know what we're discussing in closed session. I'm just asking why, I guess it was appropriate to make that comment last week and for others to agree, but why I haven't been given that same respect to at least people to share their understanding or their desire of what they want to discuss tonight. I'm being asked to vote on going into a closed session for competence or real property. We've already determined that there is no outstanding property issues to discuss. And I'm not aware of a competency issue that rises to the level of the council for us to go into closed session for us to discuss. So for that, I just wanted to be able to be on the record to say that I don't believe that we have anything that meets the threshold of this tonight. And, and certainly as we've had some counsel from our legal over the past week regarding a closed session, that, you know, if, if it's for the, the purpose of going into a closed session on a fact finding mission, that is not appropriate as well. So I, I just want to make sure clear that I know what I'm going in there discussing. Right now, I don't have anything that warrants that, therefore I, at this point, I cannot be supportive of the motion tonight. And I wanted that to be communicated and clear before we take the vote and before we potentially adjourn for that, so.
So the original request was for a special session to, or a closed door session, discuss the, the competency of an individual. Two others had agreed with that, which I'm pretty sure was the majority.
I'm not disputing that fact at all.
Several days had passed, nothing had happened. You'd sent that email.
Actually, I think several things happened. We had, we had some counsel from our legal in between.
Sorry, we're, sorry, Jerry. We're interrupting. I apologize. I apologize.
Right. Several days passed. We got emails from legal, Clint's email inquiring what this would be for. I responded. I don't know what anyone is waiting for. Three council members, which I'm pretty sure is a majority, requested a special meeting be scheduled following the joint planning commission meeting on Wednesday, September 30th. If a specific time needs to be declared, I'll suggest 7:00 PM. As to the reason, I thought that was pretty clear in my desire to discuss the competency of an individual or individuals regarding accountability for the way SLR, Mountain Ridge, was or has been handled, auto mall, as well as other recent issues, which now includes directly failing to carry out direction from council. I also suggest that the city manager, HR director, city attorney and chief carby president at city hall for the meeting. No, I received no texts, emails, phone calls, any communication of any kind to ask for me to clarify.
Would you like me to read my two emails?
What that reason was.
Would you like me to read my two emails?
If, if you want more clarification than that, and there was no email after that, after my email.
John, can I ask?
There was no other clarification. There was no other request for information. As, as a council member, if I have a question on someone else's opinion, I will pick up the phone and call them or text them or ask them directly, not make a vague reference. So I, I, in regards to the issue of property, our legal council has given us direction that, that might not be pertinent to discuss in closed, gave us the presentation. Councilwoman Orne made the, the motion. If there's not something, are we in danger in violating any law if we don't discuss property if, if we noticed it? We may not, we may not have anything to discuss, but it was put on there out of caution, out of stemming from our last conversation, council meeting, that hey, we maybe will include these others in case the, the conversation needs to be broadened because it does have to be noticed in order to discuss them. So we may or we may not, but we definitely have the one.
I, I agree that it was noticed, but again, the motion was made to discuss property and we don't have property to discuss. And I'm pointing that out, that I can't support that. With regards to, I asked in two different. I asked in two different emails, and, and I can read mine if you would like. First one sent on the 26th of September, 9:30 AM. I will read it in its entirety. "I realize in respect that one council member can request a closed meeting, but ask for additional information as to what your reasoning is at this point. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the views expressed, given the information that has been able to be provided thus far. Again, I respect the request, but personally, I'm hesitant without viewing the recording first, or the rest of the council being willing to do the same. I don't expect the information via email or text, but ask that you call me prior to the meeting so that I can gain that understanding." My second email. Again, so I have, I have specifically asked for those that have that information and that desire to please call and tell me and give me that information. I have, I have opened that door. My second email. Again, I will read it in my, in its entirety, sent on Monday, September the 28th, at 8:27 PM. Says, all, this was right after we received an email from our legal counsel, says, "All I had planned to send an email to the group tonight regarding their request for a closed session this week. My original thought was to ask the council if there was still a desire, since there had been no further discussion since the explanation given by our attorney. That seems to be somewhat of a mute point now, given the email that Steve has sent out a little earlier, which, again, was asking additional questions that legal had provided. I will once again voice my concern over convening a closed session for a couple of reasons. First, from my previous concern expressed to that group last week, prior to the explanation from Chase. At that time, I expressed concern over the reason for asking for the closed session, as there is not currently an outstanding issue as it relates to the purchase of land. With regards to the competence of an individual, again, I'm not clear on the particular concern that others feel warrant the closed request. I respect the request and ask for those desiring to please call me and explain their reasoning, so I have a better understanding. I still have not heard from anyone personally, and only aware that Steve still supports the request based on his email. Next, I'm concerned that the ability to convene a closed session to discuss a previous land purchase, as outlined by our city attorney in his previous email, a land purchase matter was previously discussed in a closed session where direction was given and followed through. There were a couple of measures put in place at that time to protect the interest of the city. The city has recently exercised one of those options and have a commitment to pay the remainder, leaving no outstanding issue that I feel meets the closed requirement. With that said, I'm not personally in agreeance that a competence issue needs to be discussed, but again, respect the opinions of others and open to listening to their reasons." So I, I, I respect, Jared, that, that you feel like that the onus is all on me to, to text or pick up the phone, but I sent that to the group asking sincerely, if you have a reason, let me know.
I've given you my reason. If you want more detail from me, call me. I'm assuming that you're talking to other councilmen.
But you did not give a, you really did not give a reason. You gave confidence of an individual regarding the accountability, but again, I don't know specifically what that means.
I'm gonna step in and allow Councilman Shields to speak. So Councilman Shields, you had a, you had a question?
Chase, would it be appropriate if we were calling for a closed session to discuss the character, professional competency, or physical, mental health of an individual, to name that individual in writing in a public email before we go into that meeting?
That's why I asked for a phone call.
And I, I gave you a phone call and I told you a reason.
And Steve, I, I said I absolutely appreciated yours. I, I have no issue with, with our discussion, none. I very much appreciate that phone call and the fact that you took the time to do so.
I'm just saying that I, I did not feel that it was appropriate in an email to be naming a person's name. That's grandable, and I don't want anybody's name to be maligned, should there be no action or any matter that comes out of the closed session that needs further attention.
Steve, I couldn't agree more with you.
And so I, I think that a motion to discuss an individual is sufficient for this group to justify going into a closed session.
Mayor, I also have a comment. I seconded this, and the reason I asked for property to be put on this is because of the situation that we had last closed session. I did not want, I wanted to get things resolved. And if we don't notice it, and then we have all these hanging out things, then it doesn't get resolved. So I asked for both issues to be. Quite frankly, Clint, I didn't call you, because, first of all, one of the reasons Steve just said I'm not gonna blast that on the email. And if I have a question, I pick up the phone and call, and I would expect that you would do the same. If you want to know my feelings about something, just give me a call.
So thank you. I, I think that's been a hopefully helpful and healthy discussion regarding this particular motion. I am going to go ahead and accept, or take the vote on this item at this point, if there's no further discussion regarding this specific motion.
So I, I do have one other question, though. In deference to, to Clint's comment, I, I would propose a modification to the motion.
Are you offering a substitute motion?
Yeah, where we would strike and the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property as provided. However, in that closed session, should we determine that we need to have a discussion about property, we will have to exit that closed session and make a new motion to go back into a new closed session to have a discussion about real property. That seems to be a little bit of an absurd procedure. However, if that's what, if that's an adamant point, I'm willing to concede it, and I will make that substitute motion.
So I have a substitute motion on that item, and do I have a second on the substitute?
I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second on the substitute, which becomes our primary motion at this point. So the motion is that we go into closed for character, professional competency, and physical or mental health of an individual as provided by Utah Code annotated 52-4-205. Is there any further discussion on that motion? As such, I will take a vote.
Yes.
Steve, thank you. Jared?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Clint?
No.
And I will vote no. That motion, however, does pass, and so we are going to move into closed session.
I have a question on whether it passes.
Under the code, a two-thirds vote.
That motion fails with a two-thirds vote required. So would you mind, I'm sorry, would you mind standing up to, to explain that? I was unaware of that.
Under 52-4-204, a two-thirds vote of the public body is required to go into a closed meeting. For this body, that would be four members.
So it is required to have four members to go into a closed session?
Yes.
So unfortunately, that motion fails.
One or two is needed.
What, sorry, what was that?
What happened to the only one or two is needed?
Not just to put it on agenda.
To request, to request to me, yeah. So with that, that motion fails. As that motion has failed, do I have any further motions?
No, I guess we'll just talk about it in open session, then. We will discuss the
Competency of an individual.
Character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual in a public setting.
I would ask again, if the other council member and mayor, if you would like to just discuss it in an open meeting, or if you would like to protect the individual a little bit better by having to...
So I do not want to be bullied right now and, and say, either, either it's on you that we discuss it in a public meeting, or we go into closed.
How well is it? There's only five members.
I'm gonna step in to make sure that we maintain some order. Guys, I'm gonna step in as chair. Clint? Clint, thank you. We have a week to figure this out, because we cannot talk about it today, because it has not been noticed. So as we cannot talk about it today, it gives us a chance to take a minute. We have to renotice for our next meeting anyways. So I will happily reach out to each of you individually to, because I, one, was not aware that it was a two-thirds vote. And two, I will happily reach out to get your specific input, because I have not gotten any specifics on this from any of you. No, to be fair, I have not reached out to you. And we will have that discussion. Right now is not the time to have that discussion. And if we, and if we come back, and in a week we've noticed, and we will...
I want to be clear about something.
A week?
If the purpose of this meeting cannot be talked about in a public meeting, I will not talk about it outside of a closed-door meeting. That is an absolute absurd position to take. The meeting is to talk about the professional competence of an individual. Go into the meeting and talk about the individual. That's the whole freaking purpose of the meeting.
Okay.
To say that you want to not have a meeting so that you can talk about the professional competence of somebody to find out whether or not you need to glow into a closed session to talk about the professional competency of somebody is absolutely illogical. And that is a ridiculous standard. We have gone into closed session without a freaking clue about what we're going to session every single time since I have been elected.
I'm going to ask you to...
That is absolute absurdity.
And I'm trying to stop that.
We are at this point where I am ready to accept a motion to either close our current meeting, or take another mo, motion on a, on a closed session. But right now, the, the motion has already passed, and we need to move forward with what we have. Mayor, can I stand in for a second?
Tensions are high. They've been high for several weeks. And we didn't have legal counsel to give us good direction on closed orders, and we're starting to get educated on that, finally. It's good news, right? With that said, the wear and tear you're doing to your city staff is you're putting through a meat grinder and a gauntlet right now.
Say, delaying a week just can make it worse.
So I would plead, even though I agree with why you had not been told, and I'm not, you know, I have ideas, but it is wearing on all the staff. And it's going broader than you think it is. It's not just the, the command staff, it's others. So I'm saying I'm willing to go into closed door and ask to just do that, to get this off our chest, and so we have some direction. Because it's not healthy for us as a city, us as a organization, and our culture here in Harriman. These minutes will be reviewed tomorrow, and even tonight, by our staff. And they're speculating, and they are not happy about our leadership of the fighting that keeps going on. So I'm asking you, please, and maybe you still will turn it down, but I, I want to get this off our chest, so we know what we're doing.
So Brett, you're asking us to go into a closed session to be able to discuss this?
And I know a lot of...
I'm still not 100% sure what we're discussing, but...
I'll just throw it out there. I know, as the city manager and leadership of the city, I'm, I'm gonna be a strong component of that conversation. And I'm willing to get this off our chest, so our team can move forward. If we need direction, not decisiveness. I've heard over and over again, we give you direction. I want to document all the great clear direction we've given. And that needs to be happening in this, moving forward as well. I don't think it's gonna be healthy waiting another week.
So what I see before us right now are two options. The option one is to move to adjourn. Option two is to submit a new motion to go into a closed session. I am currently looking at Councilman Smith on what his thoughts are at this point.
My objection to the motion tonight is not to impede the process or the work. My objection was because I'm trying to do what was expressed last week, and to have an understanding of what it is that we're going to be discussing in there. And I have a couple of, of, in my mind, vague statements that I don't know warrant a, a closed session. And all I've asked for is clarity from those that believe that it rises to the level to provide that to me. That's simply all I ask for. It's not to be obstinate, it's not to be divisive, it's not to do anything, but it certainly is to protect our employees of this city. It 100% is meant to do that, because just as Brett just voiced, anytime we notice for individual competence of an individual, everybody is on edge. Because they don't know what is gonna come out of it. And that is my objection to the original motion, is because I don't know what it is either. And how can I go in there and have a discussion when I'm not prepared for it? And how can I help protect and give our employees a good place to work if I'm willing to go in there without specificity of what it is, and do I think it meets the mustard of going into a closed session? It's not to be divisive, but it certainly is to follow procedure. And it certainly is to offer protection to our employees. With that being said, I've got our city manager, who I respect, and who knows that it's weighing on it. If his desire is to go and to get this in there, then I will be supportive because of his request.
I can't do anything till I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to temporarily recess the city council work meeting to convene in closed session for the purpose to discuss the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual.
Second.
Sorry, provided by Utah Code annotated 52-4-205.
Do I have a second on that?
Yep.
Okay. So I have a motion by Sheri, a second by Jared. I will go ahead and take the vote if there's no further discussion at this time on this item, on this motion, not item. Jared?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Clint?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
I will still vote no. However...
Thank you, council. I appreciate that.
That moves to, moves us to the two-thirds vote. And as such, we are moving into closed session. Those who have not been invited to stay, we will ask you to politely wait outside.